Twenty-sixth of March workshop. It's okay, I'll use it for this later on. And with that, we ask that you stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mayor, would you lead us, please?
Yes, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We don't do any voting, so there's no signing in, but let it be noted that all council members are here with the exception of Councilman Shannon Hayes, who is excused. And we also have the mayor with us, city clerk, city attorney, and all our department heads. But we don't have Mr. Steele. He's tardy. Anybody have any objection to tonight's agenda?
No.
Okay, then we're going to move on with it. And we'll move right on to anybody in the audience who would like to address the council concerning anything on the workshop for tonight. Anybody in the audience like to address the council? Once, twice, thrice. Moving on to six A. Review of the Property Maintenance Code.
Such excitement, oh my goodness. Hey, gentlemen, this is, was actually moved from the November twenty-seventh, twenty-seventeen workshop. We were in the middle of discussing the code for our new code compliance officer, which now we have our new code compliance officer. Those of you that have met Chuck Vontek, he is a former Level III code enforcement officer, he is a state licensed building inspector, he is a state licensed fire and life safety inspector, and has worked for the Okaloosa School District for about sixteen years and Okaloosa Board of Commissioners for seventeen. So we are very fortunate to have a very knowledgeable man to help us portray our code.
I think we all met you Chuck, but welcome.
Thank you very much.
Okay. As you may remember, the International Property Maintenance Code, the IPMC, is what we were looking at as a sort of a model code in order to regulate the minimum maintenance requirements for our existing buildings downtown. So I'm just going to briefly run through a synopsis of it, and you have your note papers that you can, if you have a question, please just put your questions down there, and we will hopefully have them answered by the next time we're before you. The code itself is broken up into eight sections. It's administrative definitions, general requirements for the existing buildings, light ventilation and occupational limitations, plumbing facilities and fixture requirements, mechanical and electrical requirements, fire safety requirements, and then your reference standards. And most of y'all in the building industry know your reference standards pertain to the different agencies that put out their information for building codes and liabilities. The SMC, the American Society of Mechanical Engineers, the ASTM, which is the, an international reference one, mostly for our code is going to be relevant to the swimming pools and covers. Your International Code Council, who puts out their own building code, existing building code, fire code, fuel and gas code, mechanical code, plumbing code, residential code, zoning code, and your NFPA, which is your National Fire Protection Association. So let's just dive off in at what our code really is. The law for building regulation is grounded in the police power of the state. This power is the source of all authority to interact with, enact with, building regulation. Police power is the power of the state to legislate for the general welfare of its citizens. The power enables the passage of laws such as a property maintenance code, and is from the police power delegated through the state legislature to the local governments that we are enabled to enact building regulations. Chapter one, our scope and authorities. The purpose of our chapter one is your legal basis for enforcement of the code for the City of Crestview. It is all the police powers inherent enforcing minimum standards for the use and maintenance of existing buildings, which will follow this line of authority, from the United States Constitution to the state to the city. Chapter one defines the roles and responsibilities for the City of Crestview, to protect all parties from unfair enforcement action. This code also sets forth a due process that will require corrective actions to be accomplished in a constitutional manner. And as y'all are aware, our administrative board within the City of Crestview is your Board of Adjustment. The chapter one is largely concerned with maintaining due process of the law by enforcing the property maintenance criteria and provisions contained in the body of the code. Only through careful observation of the administrative provisions can the code official reasonably demonstrate that equal protection under the law has been provided. I just generally assume that it's administrative and enforcement sections of the code are geared towards the responsibilities of the code official. However, the provisions there also establish the rights and provisions of the design professional, the contractor, and your property owner. Now, if you have referred to this scope and application, you will notice that there have been several elements that have been withdrawn and modified, those deemed irrelevant and probably immaterial to the course of action that we're designing here for our enforcement of code here in Crestview. However, section 108 must remain in its entirety as it was adopted in chapter fourteen, Buildings and Building Regulations, which was part of ordinance fifteen thirteen, which passed in October twenty-eighth of twenty thirteen. In section one eleven, the means of appeal, that is, that is your appeal process or that is your equal due treatment under law. And that, we have replaced that formation of a special separate board with the use of the existing City of Crestview Board of Adjustment, which is explained to you in section one oh two thirty-six of the code. Any questions? If not, I'm going on to section two.
I noticed you got demolition before appeal. I like that.
Okay. Well, order means a lot sometimes.
I mean, just ask you, so you're saying that the code enforcement board we had would no longer exist, right?
No, sir. Code enforcement board handles code enforcement, policy, and procedures. This is when there is an administrative appeal, difference of opinion, something is deemed maybe, they think maybe it's an error. This is a time for the public to be heard on the basis of an appeal process. And that's where the Board of Adjustments come in.
Okay, nice, thank you.
It is their legal avenue because it is a legal board. The purpose of chapter two, the definitions. Code by their very nature are very technical documents. As such, literally every word, term, or punctuation mark can add to or change the meaning of an intended result. This is even more so when the performance code, where the desired result often takes more than one specific word in order to describe it. Furthermore, the code with its broad scope of, and y'all know I can't say this word, applicability, includes terms inherent to the various construction disciplines. These terms often have multiple meanings depending on the content or the discipline that is used at the time. And for those reasons, it's necessary to maintain a consensus of the specific meaning of the terms contained in the code. Now, all the terms are defined in the code or listed alphabetical order in chapter two. While the defined term may be used in one or more chapters, the meaning, when provided in chapter two, is applicable throughout the code. When the understanding of a term definition is especially keyed to, or necessary for understanding of particular provision, we're going to show the term in italicism, and that would mean that the true meaning is unique to the code itself. In other words, generally understood meanings of the term or phrase might not be sufficient or consistent enough, and we would therefore be essential to look in a code-defined meaning, where our references in chapter eight actually give you some of the different organizations that are notorious for acronyms and meanings. The ASM, the ESTM, and the AFPA, they have hooks to stick on it. So there's no need for us to define them in our little pamphlet. Clear as mud on the definitions. Okay.
You didn't want to put any pertinence in there? We'll skip that.
Yeah. It's actually going into the overall code dictionary there, with the meaning from the Michigan State of nineteen twelve, or wherever it come from. The chapter three, the general requirements, is broad scope. It includes a variety of requirements for the exterior property areas as well as interior and exterior elements of a structure. The purpose of the chapter is providing requirements that are intended to maintain a minimum level of safety and sanitation for both the general public and occupants of the structure, to maintain the building's structural and weather-resistant performance. For our use, chapter three has been modified to remove the items that are not relevant to our location or cosmetic in nature. Which, what remains provides specific criteria for regulating maintenance for specific building components, maintenance requirements of vacant structures and land, requirements regulating the safety and sanitation of interior and exterior structures, and all exterior property areas, the existence of who is responsible for complying with the chapter's provisions. This chapter also contains the requirements for swimming pools, spas, hot tubs, and the requirements for protective barriers and gates for these, in these barricades, for the swimming pools and other water-type elements. Chapter three establishes the responsible party for exterminating insects and rodents and maintaining sanitary conditions in all type of occupancies. We have added an element in section three oh three, which is, comes in with a ladder, which is part of our building code. So we have entered that in there, but as far as our chimneys, our paint, our basements and all, those have pretty much been struck from the chapter three. In your perusal, if you feel that something needs to be readdressed or thought that it might be valid to have it in, please note on your question and answer sheet. As we go on to chapter four, the...
Before you move on with that, any comments or questions? So you haven't got any questions? Okay. Yeah, I would just say, you know, this is when we spent a lot of time on chapter three, and our concern at that time was we were getting too deep in the weeds inside the homes, and that was what's been removed, so that's good. Thank you for doing that.
Okay, the chapter, lighting and ventilation occupancy limitations. The purpose of chapter four, as it set forth the requirements for the code, and established the minimal environment for occupable and habitable buildings. By establishing the minimum criteria for light ventilation and identifying the occupancy limitations within a minimum room area, width and area, minimum ceiling height and restrictions to prevent overcrowding. Meeting minimum light, ventilation, and space requirements are the basis of physiological and psychological impact as they factor into building occupants. The purpose of chapter four is to set forth these requirements in the code and to establish the minimum envir- environment for these buildings. However, for our purposes, it's not possible for one person to go through and measure all the windows to make sure that it is going to fit and be pleasingly and psychologically helpful to the occupants, as much as we would like to do that. For our purposes, we have removed the lighting and ventilation completely, and on your occupancy limitation, we have led that to the providing privacy in dwelling units, hotel units, housekeeping units, rooming units, dormitories, and they should all be arranged to provide privacy and to be separate from adjoining spaces.
Yeah, that was the other big issue that we had there, but narrow that down.
Right. And the only other element that would be under there, which is, to me, it doesn't seem like it belongs in that particular area, is food preparation. The spaces that will be occupied in food preparation purposes shall contain suitable space and equipment to store, prepare, and serve food in a sanitary manner. There should be adequate facilities for the service, for the sanitary disposal of food waste and refuse, including facilities for temporary storage. So those are the only elements that were actually left in that area of the code. There's a lot of established criteria for provisions in the other uses, but most of it stems from your psychological and physiological safekeeping of your citizens. And it's probably actually tailored to a larger city municipality with high-rise buildings and very complex, small living facility developments. We may need those one day, but I don't think we need them now. But if your opinion differs, please let me know. Chapter five, your plumbing facilities and fixture requirements. Sanitary and clean conditions in occupying buildings are dependent upon certain basic plumbing principles, including providing potable water to a building, providing the basic fixtures to effectively utilize that water, and properly removing waste from the building. Chapter five establishes the minimum criteria to verify that these principles are maintained throughout the life of the building. Since most of our buildings that the code official will be dealing with are existing, we have omitted the location, specifying locations of particular items, such as a location of where a toilet room could be, or the location where a, some other type of facility could be. It also, if you'll notice throughout, we have struck the International Plumbing Code, the International Building Code, and have replaced all with the Florida Building Code and the Florida Fire Prevention Code. Everybody on board? We're good? Okay. Chapter six, mechanical and electrical requirements. The purpose of chapter six is to establish minimum performance requirements for heating and electrical and mechanical facilities, and to establish the minimum standards for the safety of these facilities. This chapter establishes minimum criteria for the installation and maintenance of the following: heating and air conditioning equipment, appliances and their supporting systems, water heating equipment, appliances and systems, cooking equipment and appliances, ventilation and exhaust equipment, gas and liquid fuel distribution piping and components, fireplaces and solid fuel burning appliances, chimneys and vents, electrical service, electrical distribution system, equipment, and wiring. The primary objective with the mechanical and heating equipment inspections are to detect and identify and abate any condition that is potentially a fire or explosion hazard, the potential cause of asphyxiation or carbon monoxide poisoning, pose a risk to the physical injury of the occupant, prevent the equipment from being adequately performing its intended function, or that otherwise endangers the occupants of the structure. Your primary objective for the electrical equipment and systems inspection are to detect and abate any condition that is potentially fire hazard or electrical shock hazard, any condition that is inadequately provides for the supply and distribution of electrical power throughout the structure, must also be detected, identified, and abated. All mechanical and electrical facilities must be capable of providing minimum levels of safety, illumination, comfort, utility, and convenience as prescribed in this chapter of the code. With your purpose there being that the mechanical and electrical equipment, appliances, and systems must be installed for its intended purpose, must be properly installed for its intended purpose. Proper installation, however, does not in itself guarantee safety in the performance. In addition to proper installation, all of such appliances and equipment and systems must be maintained, as they are subject to deterioration, wear and aging, and may require cleaning, lubrication, and adjustment. All materials, components used to construct mechanical and electrical systems have a limited lifespan and require maintenance and replacement at various times and intervals that are specific to the material and component. And that's one of the reasons that we left so much of your mechanical elements into your plan. We have taken out receptacles and luminaries, elevators, escalators, and dumb waiters, and energy conservation devices, but we have left in the remainder of the elements for the electrical and mechanical.
Maybe we have a question here. Mr. Tosh, go ahead.
Yes, you said you took out elevators? We have buildings with elevators within the city.
Then I, that's the reason we brought it to your attention, that it's all combined in the same, if you will look at section six oh six, they are all in the same, in the same area. If it be...
We don't see a...
Section six oh six, elevators...
Wait, just one second.
It's not there.
We got six oh five, six oh seven.
In the strikeout version, in the back of your book, is your strikeout version?
Okay.
Strikeout version, I can't tell you the page on it, but section six oh six.
My question is, why would you take that out if we...
We do have elevators.
Yes.
They are usually under safety inspections, I think, from the fire department now.
State.
State, the state, and I think for local, it's the fire department. So your state and local will handle that.
Got it.
Unless you want the code official to be the third eye.
Got it.
Okay. Okay. Do know that, okay, here we are at section, section seven, the fire safety requirements. I do know there's two typos in that paragraph. That was typed at four in the morning, so yep, I do know. Chapter seven, your fire safety regulations. The purpose of chapter seven is to address the fire hazards that might arise as results of a building's occupancy, and also provides minimum requirements for fire safety issues that are most likely to arise in older buildings. For the city purposes, if an issue, case, complaint arises that involves any commercial structure, or if it's in the performance of their duties of the existing buildings, that the code official or a deputy encounters any evidence of possible violation of the fire prevention code, they will notify the Crestview Fire Department and forward any information, who will forward any information to the fire marshal on duty. The official will work with the fire department concerning the matters that relate to the Florida Fire Prevention Code. So it's not that we're skipping out because we X'd out the whole chapter. We, the City of Crestview is under the Florida Fire Prevention Code and under our fire department and our fire chief and our fire marshal. Okay, any questions on that? Okay, chapter eight, our reference standards. We read the standards out there. The code contains numerous references to standards that are used to regulate materials and methods of construction. Chapter eight contains a comprehensive list of all standards that are referenced in the code. The standards are part of the code to the extent of the reference only. Compliance with the reference standard is necessary for compliance with the code. By providing specifically adopted standards, the construction and installation requirements necessary for compliance with the code can be determined. The basis of the code compliance, therefore, is established and available on equal basis to the code official, contractor, designer, and owner. It is organized in an easy-to-locate specific standard. It lists all reference standards alphabetically by acronym from the agency. Each agency standard is then listed in either alphabetical or numeric based on the standard's identification. The list also contains the standard edition, standard reference, and any addendum included as part of the ICC adoption. And if you're, that's a lot of verbiage to say. That is your standards. And each one lists, and each one lists exactly what it's for. Gentlemen, that completes the synopsis of the Property Maintenance Code. We do, you'll notice there are many references to your chapter one sixty-six, which is your county and municipal code enforcement statute. If anyone would like a copy of that, we would be happy to provide it to you.
Mr. President, yes, one thing that's going to be the ultimate thing that needs to be done properly is if they appeal to the code enforcement, you want to make sure that the evidence presented is good and will hold up, because they'll have a right to appeal to the judiciary to the circuit court.
To the Board of Adjustment, if they appeal to the Board of Adjustment, they will.
Yeah, they have a right.
The code enfor... Right, because the next level up is the circuit court, so, but the code enforcement board does not have that avenue. That is the reason we have gone with your administrative board that will allow a person the right to appeal. So, and your Board of Adjustment is your appeal board, and that's where it needs to go, according from the direction from the basis of the code. I don't feel that we should create a new appeals board simply for existing structure and building compliance. Is it, it wouldn't be valid to, in our, to create a board such as their Board of Appeals? Did you, did you study any of that or re-over any of that?
I feel like if you've got some kind of board that you're saying that's the end result, I think they'd have a right to go to court with it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
At most any of it.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what you got in the, the code enforcement.
Yes, sir, that's what we...
Board of adjustments it provides in there, they appeal it by the judiciary.
Mm-hmm.
And it's based on evidence presented, that's the reason it's very important that what's presented is well presented. It's also very important that that board is trained to make their decisions based on what's presented because we had one, it happened before I came back down here, but we had to rehear it.
Yes, sir.
About the, I remember that, the church, yeah, the church, and they had to appeal it to the circuit court, and they would have won that case based on what, what they based their decision on.
Yes, sir, they would have...
Only wanting anything to base their decision on.
I think maybe the, the, it might be advantageous if we raise the standards for the, for the people that are gonna serve on such a high-powered board, that you choose people that are well-educated with the procedures, well-educated with the code itself, and in the past, we've been, we've taken board members simply because they would volunteer to show up. However, your board of adjustment is a very, very unique board. It is your most legal board you have, and I think in order, if, if someone is appointed there, I think they would need to undergo training to be able to recognize what the code is, what it does, the ramifications if it's not done, and give them a better chance as a board to succeed, which we are, you know, it's very hard to get someone to actually serve on a board that only meets one or two times every three years. That's the reason where our code enforcement board is actually, hasn't met in numerous years. It's a good thing and a bad thing.
It's a good thing.
It's a good thing.
If you don't have any meetings.
It's a good thing, but you also lose your members that are trained, and when, should you need it, you would come up with newbies that would need to serve with very little training.
Yeah, to keep you out of court if you don't, if they don't go to it, appeal it to the court of code enforcement, they're not gonna be able to get it in court.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what's good about it, if you can...
Well, most of our, most of the, the items that are brought at the code enforcement level, they do follow to, to the code enforcement board, who prescribes a penalty or a ruling or an adjustment, sometimes they even dismiss it, so. But just as we're thinking about, as we're redoing our code this summer, that might be an element that we kind of want to spend a little time thinking about.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Faircliff.
First of all, Ms. Teresa, I want to congratulate you. This is a lot of work, I know, and it looks pretty good to me, except...
(laughing).
Um, session 302.4, weeds.
304.
302.4.
302.4, says, uh, they cut off at a...
I'm, I'm, I'm just gonna tell you my concern.
Okay.
You can address it. Said our, our authorized employees shall be authorized to enter upon the property in violation and cut and destroy the weeds growing their own, and the cost of such removal shall be paid by the owner or agent responsible for the property. If we, or if they incur a cost because they, grandma's rose garden was so overgrown, they cut down the rose bushes too, and in the, in the, in the course of getting there, they run over and break four or five sprinkler heads, is that gonna be part of the cost incurred, or is Crestview gonna be liable for that?
Well, gentlemen, anytime you enter onto somebody's property and it results in damage, it's not a good thing. Most of the weeds on, and undergrowth are taken care of by your, not your code enforcement official, it, or your code official, it is taken care of by your code enforcement officers who do not have the right to enter on, on the premises. They post it from the roadway, they send their letters, they work with people to get voluntary compliance in getting their yards taken care of. As a matter of fact, those that are, have been disabled, or have been illed or hospitalized, they've actually worked with groups in order to get the situation taken care of by a, a form of donation or aid from people that actually do that. So I think this would be more relevant in the, it would, and it would be handled more with our code enforcement officers that, that work day-to-day with this every day. They have a splendid success rate at getting compliance, whether or not this is something you want to leave in this particular code, or...
I, I would just like some discussion on it because regardless of who we get to go onto the property to clean it up, we still need to be mindful of just clean it up, don't destroy anything else while we're there, sprinkler heads, you know, whatever.
Okay, well, now, the process we have now is, is getting the property owner to clean it up.
Well, that's not...
It's not, the ci, this, the, the city does not enter onto the premises now.
Okay, well, this says, upon failure to comply with the notice of violation, any duly authorized employee of the jurisdiction or contractor hired by the jurisdiction shall be authorized to enter upon the property in violation and cut and destroy the weeds growing their own.
Mm-hmm. Is this, this is the question before you, whether you want to take the next step up from what we do now? Do you want to increase what we're able to do?
Well, this looks good to me. I just wanna know who's gonna incur the liability if we destroy something other than weeds.
You're, the city's gonna incur if they destroy...
That's right, if the, if the city enters onto private property without some type of, well, they wouldn't go there without some type of good insurance, but...
Well, we, we've got an ordinance right here that gives us...
That's gonna give a, right of entry is one of the rights that you are granting.
But if they go on there to clean up property and they destroy sprinkler heads and stuff like that, they're gonna be, city's gonna be responsible for it.
I think so, too.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Cox, please.
Oh, yes, I don't think there's really anything new in that verbiage that's, that's really different than, than, than how the city operates successfully on this, so I'm good with that, and, and that liability has, has always been there, so I don't see anything objectionable in this.
Well, in all the years that I've had, I've been here, I don't know of a time that they actually go out and clean up the weeds out of somebody's, I don't, I don't think that would be a task your men would want, would it, do you? Mr. Steele?
Well, to, there's a lot of times that we go on private property, but we always get permission regardless if it's a, from a violation for, for us to clean up something that we've been instructed, yes, in the past, the council has instructed us to go out and, for instance, a burned house once, where it was a, it was a rat-infested home, and it was burned, and, and the council at that time instructed us to go out and clean it up because it went into foreclosure, but the residents living there come and asked the council to allow us to clean it up. So we did, but we had, what we get is we get whole harmless agreements, we get everything we can to protect us in the event that we do damage something, because if it's possible, it'll happen, and we know that from experience. Sometimes people, unfortunately, they create a, a false opportunity in, in a way, I guess, for, and, and take advantage of you and say you did this and when we didn't. But we take pictures, now we've learned, we take pictures before we do anything and after. We have to go many times now for utility reasons, just to, you know, we have, in this current ordinance, we have a right to go on private property right now as, to inspect utility for utility reasons, so sometimes we, we, you know, sometimes we do damage some, something, and, and, but we usually try to protect ourselves the best we can.
If, if it's got a mortgage on it, you're getting a whole harmless, you might also get one from the mortgage holder because if something's messed up, they can come out.
Yeah.
Ms. Block?
Yeah, I wanna go back and, Mr. President, ask the, Mr. Holly, that case you referred to a while ago, would that be associated with that item on 506.3? Look at that just a second. Would this fit this?
No, the one I referred to was a, a variance, it was a variance one, no, it wasn't a variance, what's it called, that church thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was zoning, it was a zoning...
They wanted to rezonate property.
That we're trying to rezone it.
Yeah, but it, it was, it came before the board of adjustment as a variance or...
As a request for a variance, is what it was?
Yeah, but the church filed, and of course, the only problem with that case was that I wasn't there at the first hearing, but I can tell you that it, the information that was put into evidence wasn't supposed to be appealed, and when we redid it, I, I told it, after they got through the testimony, I told the board I heard a lot of evidence that maybe should grant this, and I haven't heard any that says we shouldn't grant it, so they, they went ahead and granted it.
Bless you.
But my point and question now, I know there was an issue, what do we have set in stone, and I cannot get a complete easement from the information you have got here now on this grease interceptors, that what's required, what's not required for the maintenance, and there's an annual fee, et cetera, all this stuff? What do we have set in stone of our establishments that, that serves food on our grease interceptors right now?
I would have to pull it from the code.
Because there's lots of gray areas here.
We have, we already have ordinance in place. We actually have, if you exceed a percentage, we go out and do, with, all businesses in the city of Crestview is supposed to report to my department monthly.
Supposed to.
Where they show, supposed to.
Right.
Now, for us to go out and do anything to them, I don't have that authority, it has to go through code enforcement, but we put that ordinance in place years ago because there's ordinance that, and we go out on occasions now, and we do a test called the Sludge Judge.
Right.
And it tells us the amount of grease that's in their grease interceptor.
Right.
And it tells us if they're, if they're in violation or not. If they're in violation, we tell them they need to get it cleaned up and respond in ten days with someone that's certified to clean it up, and they usually do, and we test them so many per month, and I can give you a list of those if you want to see it, but there's ordinance anyway in place, and it's part of our water and sewer manual, a portion of the ordinance, and it's got a percentage that they have to meet.
Is there not a fee with that service?
No, there's no fee, there, I think it does allow them to find, the code enforcement to find, you know, but we don't charge a fee.
But I know there was lots of controversy this past year on an issue here in this city.
Yeah, there's lots of controversy, it was a lot of it about, about twenty years ago.
Oh, my God.
When I first, because I was responsible for putting that in, in force.
Right.
And because of what it was doing to the sewer system, there wasn't anything, and, and we wrote that ordinance, put it in there to clean it up, because it was, it was causing us, if you remember, you've been here a long time, you remember whenever we were having such a hard time with sewer overflows everywhere.
Oh, yeah.
And grease was clogging up the, the city lines everywhere, and it was getting increased. The EP was really getting upset with us, so we had to put this ordinance in place to help clean it up.
But I was advised that the city charged a fee for that service, that inspection of that interceptor, et cetera. But I can't find that.
No, we have no, we have no way of charging anything from my department. Everything that we charge for is going through the city clerk, it's on the water bill.
Okay. There's lots of gray area, I know, in that issue.
Well, we will see where the, the fee comes into being, but keep in mind, your officers, code enforcement officers that were in, that do the routine, um, task now, would not necessarily have been able to do anything with a, with the grease interceptor your new official will.
Well, that takes a professional to do that. No, Tom, Dick, and Harry don't do that.
No, I meant, well, not to do anything with it, but to cite them with a, if we needed to find them.
Yeah, okay. That's still, I find lots of gray stuff in that one item.
Okay, well, we will see what we can find out about that, especially in our, when we're redoing the portions of the code that intercept with your LDO.
Oh, man, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there...
Any other comments, questions? I would just like to add to what Ms. Faircliff said, and that is, we had that, had that big presentation a few months back, and we had some issues with it, and you cleaned it up very well, and brought it back to us, and we thank you for doing that.
If there's any other items that after you review, if, that you would like us to address, please either forward your paper copy, or email it, or whatever we need to do. We would like to get this into ordinance format and get it back before the board in order for adoption.
Mr. President, do you have a date set you're gonna try to get all this information? So you have a certain date to compile it?
Well, just as, as soon as possible. We're going, we were looking at the April ninth meeting, but unfortunately, y'all are gonna be so sick of ordinances, so if we could get it in, in the May fourteenth, um, council meeting, which means that I need to have it, I need to have it complete by April eighteenth, so...
Well, I would like to set a specified date, Mr. President, to have this information into her.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good idea, I don't want to do. What would you, in order for you to get it down by the eighteenth of April? What would you need to you, all inputs?
Uh, if I could have all inputs by the April ninth council meeting, if I could have them in hand, that will give me about a week to pull it together.
Everybody got that? All nuts? All right.
Okay.
Okay.
You ready for item B?
I believe we're ready for item B.
Okay. Item B's not gonna be very complex. Addressing issues, those of you that remember the, our addressing points in, in multiple meetings from 2014, we primarily, I wanted to discuss the physical addressing of the structures and its relationship with the 2020 census. The census has already begun its preparation for its collection task. The city has received numerous requests for updated address data files for all of the parcels within the jurisdictional boundaries. We have several issues that are still out from that... We have several issues that are still out from that addressing update that was started in 2014. Our key components was that the addresses need to contain the proper post-directional designation and that the numbers were in the proper physical location of the structure, that they were in contrasting color and visible, uh, from the roadway, that the databases throughout the city needed to be updated and modified, address files needed to be synced with the local government unit, unit for your communication tax of which we receive fundings based on your correct addresses. So all of those elements are part of, are valuable in having, uh, our address dilemma solved. Among the addressing points and data, there was a mandate for their retro reflectivity on the signs. I checked with, uh, Mr. Steele and public services is 100% complete with their stop sign, 95 with their information signs and speed limit signs and about 50% on their street signs. The saving grace is that the federal highway administration has relaxed the requirement to have the retro reflectivity upgrades completed within the five years that it was originally mandated. So public services will continue doing the upgrade on all signs as they're replaced, but without a rigid timeframe, it may be another three to five years before our, they finish updating our street signs.
Well, they're, just add, I'm sorry, but another reasons too, we, we budgeted money for the five years, well, this ended the five years, this budget year and we, the street signs cost us, our, our quote right now per sign is $18.70 for a street sign to meet the retro reflectivity, you know, to have the name on each side and the post-directional portion of it changed because I just, with, to meet that code with our reflectivity on them now, it's much higher than it used to be. Used to, we could get them for $7 and something. And now it's, it's, uh, about $10 added to that.
Everything boils down to our budget. Ooh, that's coming up, isn't it? Okay.
We'll get there, we'll get them all done sooner or later.
Well, our most urgent ones, I think, are the ones with the post-directionals and the pre-directionals and that's pretty much centralized in the middle of town. The highest priority we need to concentrate on is the physical placement of the addresses on the structures. It's extremely important to emergency services. They need to read the address from the street and the emergency provider, that's a must and in order to reach their destination as quickly as possible. Unfortunately, we have been out in the field and a good 70% are not readable. Some don't exist, some are blocked by trees, some are the same color as this building they're up against. So rather than spin our wheels in the field, uh, taking any more inventory, uh, we thought maybe we'd have a, a different attitude about reaching the public. Because this 2020 census is very important and it's the, y'all know it's the process of compiling and, and collecting the data that'll influence, um, government and private sector developments, decisions over the next decade. Since, uh, many of them involved in the allotting, many of the elements involve allotting out funding for the city, uh, at higher level government, uh, levels, uh, it's necessary for us to be as concise and complete as we possibly can be. Now, many of your local city census workers will be local workers and they may know the road schematics, they may know where the roads are, but unless they got a crystal ball, they may not can verify what the address is. And as you know, in the census, you've got your long form, your short form, you got your physical visit. Well, I'm looking to see if this will be the third time my census worker has graced my house with the long form. Most peoples have had it, have one in a lifetime. And when we built our house, uh, we have now been graced two decades, so it's going to be anxious to see if they're going to grace us a third decade. That's usually 10 to 15% of the population. Uh, you have your simplified mailing, some people never get touched at all, but still for the other purposes of having a valid address on your structure would far outweigh, um, uh, just neglecting it. So we've discussed, uh, discussed with, uh, Ms. Roy at the possibility of the, uh, utilizing the utility invoices and we talked about posting on social media, the website, we could post flyers similar to the way, way we advertise the town hall meetings to, in the public locations, um, maybe an element in the paper occasionally. Anything we can do to help citizens realize that they really need to make their address visible on their structure. Now, I know a few years ago, um, the Okaloosa County actually put, started putting, uh, little metal flag addresses in front of the structures that had no identification, but there again, those are very expensive. Um, I'm just open to suggestions if we're, if you would like to try the public notification, uh, element. We would need, how, did you decide, did you find the cost on that?
It's less than $500 to reach everybody, so...
Less than $500?
I do have a question for you, Teresa, and that is, when developers come in, do we, do we make them comply with this, all new homes going up? Do they know exactly what they're supposed to do on the homes?
Yes, sir.
Uh, how long we've been doing that? So we have all the subdivisions, we probably weren't doing that.
No, there's, the majority of the city, uh, would have been prior to the, uh, coming, even mentioning it in 2014.
But all the new ones comply.
The, that's one of the, the, uh, items on their checklist, just like in, one tree in the front yard, one address on your structure.
Mr. President?
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Block.
Teresa, you referring to address on the structure? Is that just the number of that infrastructure only?
Yes, sir, that's the num, the house number. It's just a house number.
And is there a minimum or maximum size of that? I don't find that indicated anywhere.
Yes, sir, there in our code, there is a, um, a three inch, um, residential and a six inch minimum for commercial. We usually, uh, address it with our commercial to go at least nine inches. If, on their building, nine inches to, uh, 12 inches and they're perfectly agreeable with that. Um, I really wish ours was bigger than the three inches on a residential structure because that's not very visible. We, in our letters that we have sent out, we suggest that they utilize a six inch on their, on their structure, uh, but I have no, nothing that mandates they have to, but...
But what are we doing to correct the problem we got here in this city, odds and even numbers on the same side of the street?
We're working on them. We're also trying to get rid of the halves.
That's the problem.
Yeah, we've got, we, we also, a lot of our problems stem from people just assuming their own address. You'll be surprised that the number of people that make up their own address, that's residential and commercial.
Yeah.
We have a, we have an establishment here in town that simply put up their own address. So...
Teresa, in one of the issues when we're getting into people having the wrong address, in our utility billing system, if we decide, and we have to be very careful changing from the pre-directional to the post-directional, if we train, train some, change something incorrectly from 198 North Wilson Street to 198 Wilson Street North, it completely wipes out all history in the, in the system. So we have to be very, very careful and almost put a second address in there to do that since, you know, AKA 198, because if you change it and you go in and you just change it out, it wipes every bit of the history out of that system.
That's the most, uh, the utility system is the most temperamental in the city. It's, of course, it's probably one of the, it's probably one of the oldest ones that have come up and it just doesn't like, uh, changes very often.
It's all tied together with the land maps and everything else, so we have to be very careful.
Oh, the information that the GIS use now that actually is dumped into the police's, uh, as a matter of fact, your lady did call me, I got, uh, and all, actually stemmed from the use from the property appraisers, uh, database, which has the, uh, they have worked diligently to correct their system. They did have to buy new equipment because, um, in 2014, they cannot utilize the post-directionals very easily, but because the city had stood on the post-directional, just as, I think Valp is another post-directional, they have, uh, come up with their equipment, their programming, and they have just about changed the majority of the addresses that they need to, um, address in their particular system. And we actually dropped the, those particular address GIS points down from the database from the Okaloosa County to utilize within our city for our GIS purposes.
Go ahead, Ms. Block.
Teresa, what percentage are we correct on our 911 current addresses?
Well, in which area are we going to be correct in? If we're correct with our GIS, we are, we're, we have worked diligently with 911 for the past...
Three years.
Several years.
Yeah.
And we're very compatible with our GIS, um, points and addresses in the, there. Now, your entities that are going to use the GIS point data as it's dropped from Okaloosa County will be more accurate, which as, uh, the new program that, uh, the police department has now, is a much more accurate, uh, program and database than they've ever had before. And I think, I'm not sure FIRE uses the drop down from the...
Not yet.
Not yet?
Not yet. We're still trying to build a database and everything else, so we're going to be using the same as PD.
Same as PD? So everybody will be synchronized into a very regimented, watched, uh, system. We are now, um, Lynette Vanta was their 911 counterpart at Okaloosa County and she retired the first of March. We're working with Christine Cooper, who is there over the emergency management and we have been working with them for, like I say, several years at clearing up all the 911 addresses. Um, so our 911 are fairly good. I would say comfortable with about 70, 75%.
At the point, at today, today, basically.
That's kind of scary though, isn't it?
It is, yes, it is, one live. Now, Chief Taylor, what percentage do you find correctly on the 911 in your activities?
I'll have to check with my critical systems manager.
We have just received a request from the police department to update their drop.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yep, so we will be, as a matter of fact, he'll be much more correct very shortly.
Yes, okay, thank you.
What would you like from us this evening?
I...
Contensus for what?
Well, I'm going to need $500 for, uh, water bills. I need permission for Ms. Betsy to put them in there. Do you want flyers? Uh, can I put them all over the city? Can I, uh, how, how do you want me to educate the public?
Teresa and I, Teresa and I have been discussing and I get this vision of a right/wrong, just basically a very simple, what does your house number look like? What does your commercial business look like? This is right, this is wrong, this is right, this is wrong. And then, that's a good way to start, rather than sending out 10,000 letters.
Yep, well, actually, uh, now, are they able to have a diagram in that particular...
We can do full eight and a half, 11 color if we want to spend a little extra money. $500 I think is tops and that would be for color. So if we did it, that's a color with a one page, eight and a half by 11, they sold it and put it in there, so it's not...
Yeah, we're looking...
Get a lot of information in eight and a half by 11.
We, we want something that's, uh, they can look at and even if they cannot read, they will know what it's talking about. That, the picture of the structure, where your address goes and that it's, uh, supposed to be a contrasting color and the size, so, uh...
Will we put verbiage in on the importance of doing that?
Oh, yeah. There will be verbiage.
We can put a lot of flyers in the utility bill for the 45 or the money it would cost us, just over $5,000 to mail out.
Yeah, that's...
And probably get, and 60% of those that get picked in the garbage.
Would be trashed.
Whereas, we can put them in the water bill, we can put signs in the lobby, we can do a lot of things in-house, less expensively than mailing out.
Yeah, doesn't that, doesn't that make sense?
Yeah, nobody wants to, nobody wants to address mail outs, I can tell you.
Go ahead, Ms. Block.
Ask Mr. Steele, approximately, how many street signs do we have allocated in this city or do we need in this city or do we have current in this city?
I have no idea. I would have to, I'd have to ask Mr. Bowden, see if he really, and I'm sure he knows, but...
Yeah.
And I, I think I've been asked this question before and had to go research it, but I, I can't tell you, I, I would be guessing.
Okay, thank you. Would you agree we want to do a mail out in, uh, water bill for the residents?
I want to educate the people.
Water bill is best way. You got permission to spend money for doing that?
Okay. Limited to $500?
No.
Do you want them to go out, uh, twice? You want to...
What'd you think, Pam Clerk?
I mean, like I said, it would cost us over almost $5,000 to mail them out, so we could mail them out three times. The, the, the issue is, and I think, just give Teresa and I the liberty of sitting now and working this out, we put posters in the lobby, we put...
Social media.
Things in the water bill, we put them on the website, we put it on...
Facebook.
Facebook, we put it on Twitter, we put it everywhere. The police department and the fire department puts it on their Facebook, that's even more important if they do it, if they think, ooh, this might get the police and, and fire to me faster, they might be even more likely to do it if it goes out on their social media as opposed to just being in, in the city's social media. That's what everybody keeps telling us, I don't read the paper, I don't do this, I don't read, you know, sorry, paper guy. You need to get the bullets in online, okay? Um, but, um, everything we can do and a lot of that, once we get a flyer done, it doesn't cost us anything to put it on social media, it doesn't cost us anything to put it on Twitter. If it's a public service announcement, I'm sure it won't cost us anything for it to go out in the earth. So, you know, you've got all those different aspects that we can do, we've got, you know, five social media accounts or 10 social media accounts. You're going to get somebody and you're going to hit somebody that way. We talk about it, we've already talked about it in here and I'm sure these guys are going to talk about it on the, on the radio and on the paper. It's got to be done, you know, and like I said, I would be more likely, if I'm worried about the fire policeman getting in my house, to pay attention to what they put on their social media than anything else. But it's, I would say, just let us work it out. We can do it a whole lot cheaper than a mail out that's going to get pitched.
Mm-hmm.
We can, and we...
But, but the water bill is fine, you were talking about a separate mail out.
I'm talking about just a direct mail.
We're talking about using the water bill.
And, and we have a, and with our new water billing system and, and we maybe have this in place by then, it is a possibility to just email it out. We have email systems, numbers of the, of a lot of the water customers that we may be able to do a direct email out. I haven't looked into that part, where we can send them an email going, hey, pay attention. You know, just let us work it out and we'll get it out there and get the information out as, as cleanly and as simply as possible.
Homeowners associations are another group that would be advantageous to contact, so... Okay. Thank you, thank you. Ready for number C?
We're ready.
Number C. Okay, a CO has been issued for pet scents in Crestview Crossing. They're looking for a grand opening about mid-April. Uh, Popeyes has a D O issued, construction's underway... Popeyes has a DO issued, construction's underway, the DO has been modified because, for the request of a, the driveway has actually been improved, where that it's coming in a little farther to the north, and it has greatly improved the traffic flow and movement. Chick-fil-A has a DO issued, construction's underway, they've got ductwork, sheetwork, and site work in progress. Fairfield Inn, DO underway, same thing, site work and sheet rock roofing. We have Kelly's Auto and Diesel, they're underway, they're finishing up their structure, and the site work is well underway. Eden's Assisted Living Facility, DO's been issued, site work and form warrants up for the foundation, and they should be pouring rather soon. Dr. Phil Alabata's Eye Clinic, the DO has been issued, except the site work has not been started yet. Your Watermark Assisted Living Facility, DO was issued the other day.
That's one on Hickory?
Hickory?
Yeah.
No, Watermark's on Patriot Lane.
Yeah. Okay, which one, going up on Hickory then, by Vitaleano?
Oh, that's just a group home. It's just a home, uh-huh, that's just a group home. Your assisted living facilities are Eden's over on Redstone Avenue West.
I know what you mean.
And there. Okay, and the Walmart Online Grocery Pickup has its DO in hand and has started accumulating up the construction areas to have that go forward. Ironhaus Town Homes have submitted their plat, and Redstone Commons East will be in TRC tomorrow. It is the unit to this very easternmost of Redstone Common, Redstone Avenue East, projected to have three hundred and fifty units. And I'm turning it back to Mr. Whitten, who said to remind him of an important announcement.
Yeah. Thank you, I want to give, I want to give an update on the transportation workshop with Senator Gaynor, because what happened is after the session finished in Tallahassee, everybody abandoned the city, so there was no answer on his telephones, no answer to his emails, and Commissioner Fountain and I were trying to schedule people, but we had to lock him in to a specific date on the twenty-ninth, to make sure he was going to make it there, and we could never do that, so I finally contacted him and said, we're going to need a new date, because he wants eighteen to twenty people there, and until we lock in his date, we can't do anything else. So, I met with Senator Gaynor and Representative Pond last week, and they agreed together, so now we know we have two of them at least, to reschedule in early May, and I then contacted Senator Gaynor's office and narrowed that down, and they decided on the third of May. But keep in mind, it's not our decision, it's Senator Gaynor's workshop, he's having it here in Crestview, and he's asking us to coordinate it, so we're bringing people in, but on the third of May, right now, Commissioner Fountain and his staff is working to bring in the other senators, representatives, DOT, and the representatives from Meaglin. In fact, I met with Commissioner Fountain this morning to see where we are on that, and they don't have confirmation back from everybody yet, but I want to make sure, City Clerk has already reserved Warriors Hall on the third of May, and because we're moving along with this, I called and asked me with Congressman Gates, who's going to be in Niceville this week, to see what kind of support we can get from him, and I had to agree to meet with him at eight o'clock in the morning, but I do have time with him Thursday, and I'm going to bend his ear and, and let him know what we're doing, and give him a set of the plans, and just, the more people that have money that know about our transportation needs, the better off we are. So, I'll be doing that on Thursday, and I've asked Commissioner Fountain to join me there, and we'll just sit down and have a chat with Congressman on Thursday. But right now, it looks as though the third of May is the date we're shooting for. Do you have a time on that yet? We don't, but the senator had suggested it would be an all-day drag-em-out workshop. We're looking at ten, maybe ten o'clock in the morning to three or four in the afternoon, so it'd be an all-day type thing, but no, we don't have the exact time yet. We do have a little bit of time this summer, we were really cramped trying to do the other one. Any other comments or questions? Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Cox.
Oh, I'll miss that date, I'm vacation out of the area.
Okay, and there's, and there's never going to be a day we're going to get twenty people together on the same day, so I understand that, but... That's all I have, Mr. President. Okay, anybody in the audience who would like to address the council before we close this evening? Anybody in the audience?
Calzada Mar, WAZWJSP, five oh six, First Avenue West, okay. I'm going to put my salesman hat on. Sell the sizzle. We've taken that training, some of us have. Promoting your sign chain, sell the benefits. The fire truck can get there quicker, the ambulance can get there safer, the police can get there when there's a need, when 911 is called, and make them, you know, sell what they can do so that they can be seen, you know, don't put it on this end of the house with the tree, with the house lights over here, all those good points, but sell the sizzle, and I know Teresa will already volunteer to do a Z-Files, and we'll show and tell on that.
Thank you, yeah, absolutely. Any other individuals? All right, Department Head, you have anything for us? Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Steele.
I would just like to give a quick update on, on a couple of projects while I have the opportunity. The dog park planning, you receive plans, we've been meeting with April Meyer, we met with her two weeks ago, we've whittled that cost down some, and then we went back, we have a meeting scheduled for, with her, again, this coming week, we're going to see what items she will agree to pull from and see what items she has got donated, so we're trying to get the cost on down, you know, it started out with a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, we're down to ninety-seven, and now we're trying to get it down to where we can cover those costs with donations, and where's, where it's, where it can be funded like it was originally presented to the council. Okay, we have the plans done, and all the site plans, we're ready to get with TRC, with the Environmental Center, everything's done, I was working on that last week, real hard, I, like I said, I took this one under my own wing and was going to do it, and I didn't, just Fred and I, the city engineer, doing it, so we're able to pretty much get everything ready, we're ready to take it to TRC, and you'll see it soon. You already approved the building, we just spring back the contract once we get that finished and get ready to start doing that project. Also, we've, we've started construction on the splash pads, the new, the new splash pads at Northview Park, down where Mr. Cox and Ms. Roy lives, also the one over at Allen Park, it's, it's, it's a little further along than, than the one at Northview, they're both, foundations are done, the concrete's been poured over there, all the items go in, our hopes are to have the one at Allen Park up and running by May Day, the May Day Festival, so, and the, you, I don't know if you noticed, but all the new playground equipment at this walk track has been installed for that, that was part of one of the, the grants that we received. So, we've been moving along, doing one, and there's a long list of all those twenty other projects that, and I just wanted to give you a few things that you can see, there's tangible that you see going up in parks and around, around the city.
Thank you.
Easter egg hunts at Twin Hills Park on, it's the thirty-first.
Any other inputs? Department Heads. Madam Clerk, you have anything for us?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mary, you have anything for us?
Yeah, just real quickly, I'm sure all of us got the information this week from Senator Nelson's office, that the Amtrak funding has been, has been restored in that last spending bill. However, I try not to get too excited about that sort of thing, because the plans from the beginning was to restore service first from New Orleans to Mobile, and even though the Senator Nelson's letter said this was going to be good for the Gulf Coast, it may be, with all the infrastructure money that's coming available now, but it's still going to be a while, even with the best circumstances, it's going to take a while before that service gets past Mobile. And just one other thing, I wanted to thank Mr. Whitten for filling in for me Saturday, I appreciate that very much, sir, thank you.
Enjoyable.
Hope you didn't eat any barbecue.
Gentleman, you have anything else? Yes, go ahead, Ms. Cox.
Yeah, I just want to thank Teresa for the presentation, and a lot of work has went into this, on the property maintenance review, and, and it looks like it's about ready for prime time, and also want to personally acknowledge Mr. Chuck Banta, who comes with immense qualifications and experience to our city, so just want to acknowledge that.
I sanction that, too, you know that.
With that, this meeting is adjourned, thank you for coming.